And again, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Here.
Carbonero absent. Daney?
Here.
Gabrenia?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
President Wallace?
Here. One item on our committee of the whole agenda this evening is community and economic development. Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our one item is in regard to the Stearns and Munger proposal, and I would defer for the many details to Roberta.
Thank you, trustee Gabrenia. As you may recall, the 27-acre subject property is located at the northeast corner of Stearns and Munger roads. The petitioner is requesting to subdivide the property into three lots. Lots one and two would each consist of a 207,000-square-foot warehouse building with lot three proposed for detention. The petitioner is also requesting to rezone the property from the OR office research and SR5 suburban residential multifamily zoning districts to the I-2 EDA Economic Development Area Overlay Zoning District. The rezoning request is consistent with the future land use map and the West Bartlett Road Corridor Plan, which designates the property as Mix Business Park. A site plan review is being requested for lots one and two and the proposed warehouse buildings. Each building would be oriented towards Stearns Road with truck parking and loading located north of each building. Passenger vehicle parking would be located south and west of building one and south and east of building two. Both buildings would be 41 feet in height, below the 45-foot maximum height stated in the zoning ordinance, and the two buildings would be mirror images of one another. Two curb cuts are proposed along Stearns Road. The eastern curb cut would be a right-in, right-out for passenger vehicles only and located approximately 360 feet west of Linfield Lane. The western curb cut would provide full access to both lots and would be approximately 1,000 feet west of Linfield Lane. One curb cut is proposed on Munger Road and would allow for a right-in, a right-out, and a left-out movement. No curb cuts are proposed on Linfield Lane as part of this development proposal. The petitioner is also requesting a special use permit to fill two wetlands on the site, both of which are considered isolated. A 10-foot-wide bike path would be installed along Stearns Road that would connect to the existing bike path segment at the Munger Road intersection to the west and the existing sidewalk to the east. The proposed roadway improvements include opening the existing median on Munger Road to allow left-turn movements, but these movements would be prohibited during weekday peak hours, and adding an eastbound left-turn lane at the western full-access point on Stearns Road. The village's traffic consultant reviewed the plans and concluded the documentation provided adequately addressed any comments pertaining to traffic, parking, and onsite circulation. The ZBA reviewed the variance request on lot one to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 234 to 222 and conducted the required public hearing on March 7, 2019. The ZBA recommended approval. The Plan Commission reviewed the subdivision, rezoning, site plan, and special use permit requests and conducted the required public hearing at their meeting on March 14, 2019. The Plan Commission recommended approval, subject to the conditions and findings of fact outlined in the staff report, but they also directed the petitioner to work with the village engineer and staff to increase the height of the berm. At the public hearing, several residents presented two petitions of opposition for the project, and the concerns were primarily focused on traffic, trash, noise, emissions, lighting, and the rezoning of the property. Since the Plan Commission meeting, the petitioner has continued to work with the staff and the village engineer to address the concerns from the residents. The following is a list of changes and concessions proposed for the project. First, the berm proposed along the east property line has been moved 10 feet closer to Linfield Lane, which increased the overall height from 5 to 6 feet to 9 to 10 feet, which is directly across from Linfield Lane and the homes on Linfield Lane, as requested by the Plan Commission. Additional landscaping is proposed to be planted on the berm, including a minimum six-foot-tall evergreen trees to provide year-round screening. Trash and refuse shall be contained in trash compactors. All snow, as a result of plowing, shall be contained on the subject property. Cornelian cherry shrubs shall be replaced with dogwoods, per the request by the Forest Preserve District. Asphalt sealants that contain coal tar products shall not be utilized, per the request of the Forest Preserve District. And all recommendations made by the village's environmental consultant regarding possible emissions would be adhered to, and these would include diesel engine idling shall be kept to a minimum and comply with the DuPage County Ordinance, which limits idling to 30-minute increments. Loading docks that require continuous or prolonged diesel engine idling shall be equipped with exhaust controls. Forklifts shall be propane-fueled or electric-driven. On-site diesel and yard equipment shall use only ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel or an appropriate biodiesel ULSD blend. Finally, sufficient ventilation within idling areas will be required to reduce concentrated conditions. The village's traffic consultant is here tonight. The petitioner is here tonight. Residents are here tonight to speak, and this is actually a rendering of the proposed And here is an existing rendering. This was the, let's see, this was the original berm from Linfield Lane, and this is the revised landscaping added onto the berm.
At this time, I would...
Do the petitioners have a presentation?
[inaudible]
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Michael Roth. I'm an attorney representing the petitioner. My address is 2300 Cabot Drive in Lyle. With me tonight is Jana Cronin, the current owner of the subject property, as well as Aaron Martel, who is the executive vice president of the petitioner Logistics Property Company. You have already mentioned that you have a voluminous packet before you in this matter. We trust that you've read it all. It's all very well-written. It's very accurate. I don't have a lot more to say than what Roberta has already said. You also have the specifics of what it is we're asking for, four things: site plan approval, approval of a minor variance for parking, approval of the rezoning to the I-2 EDA, and finally, the wetland special use permit. The reasoning of the Zoning Board of Appeals in unanimously recommending its approval of the variance for parking, which ultimately would provide the same number of parking places for the two lots as would be required if both of them were individually compliant. It's a separation of the two lots, and they're going to have shared parking, and the total number of parking spaces will be provided. The reasoning and the rationale for the Zoning Board of Appeals is stated in their minutes, and if you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to try to answer them. The staff report that went before the Plan Commission was also very detailed, and as we said there, we had no disagreement with anything that was said there. The Plan Commission, like the Zoning Board of Appeals, had a lengthy hearing, and its minutes are also before you, and the reasoning behind its finding and its recommendations in favor of the wetland special use permit, which is only to basically relocate a very small, two very small portions of wetland over to the eastern portion of the property to create a much larger wetland area, which is natural, dry-bottomed, and will provide a nice spacing and buffering from the residential properties to the east. That's the request with regards to the wetland special use permit, which is required any time a special, a wetland is involved. With regards to the rezoning to the I-2 EDA, I'll just say that what we're requesting is consistent with the Village of Bartlett's future land use plan. It's consistent with the village's West Bartlett Road Corridor Plan. It is consistent with the Brewster's Creek Business Park, what its plan is, what its zoning is, what its design is, and what its actual uses are. This property, as you know, is basically a carve-out from the Brewster's Creek Business Park and will fit nicely within what the village envisioned to be the uses on this property. As Roberta also mentioned, there were a few things that have occurred through our meetings with staff and with the residents neighboring the property since the Plan Commission hearing. She's detailed what those issues were. We also met with John Martin to try to see what other issues might be, we might be able to discuss with him. And so, that's pretty much it. The principal issues here, as we see it, are land use and traffic, and I want to emphasize that, as distinguished from the residents' desire to have this property developed, at least the eastern portion, as residential, our proposal is to have no access in or out from our property to Linfield Road. There'd be none, and that's unlike what the alternative proposal by the residents would be. Our proposal is consistent with the county's roadway plan. Again, no curb cuts or access onto Linfield or the three houses that actually front our property. There'd be significant setback from their houses to the nearest point of improvement on the logistics property. 500 feet, 500 feet of open space, which would be the wetland, and the buffering as well. And this is significantly more than what you would see immediately north of our property for those properties that actually back up to Brewster's Creek on the west side of Linfield Road. So, we're here really to answer any questions that you might have. As I said, you've got an extensive reports behind you, and we're here to answer any questions. Other than that, Jana, could you speak? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not the only owner of the property. My brother John is here with me, and we own it together with our other six brothers. And I'll just give you a little background on the history of it. Our father bought it back in 1967 or '68 with inheritance from our mother, and so it's been in the family for now over 50 years. And it is available and on the market. It has been for many years, and we have it listed on the website of the Village of Bartlett as well. We've tried to sell it, and we've had no interest in it over all these years. And under the current zoning, which is the OR SR5, what I understand is that no one's interested in developing it for retail, for example, because of the location. The forest preserve is across the road. There's really nothing as far as retail to the west. Most of it is down by 59, so it's sort of isolated, and there's no drive-by traffic. We've never had any interest at all in any retail. And as far as office, which is a portion of it too, we've not had any inquiries in that, and that's been, I've been involved, and my brother and I, for over 20 years, probably 30 years, in much of the management of it, and there's no interest. Multifamilies, the same thing, nothing. About six years ago, we did hear from Pulte Homes that had an interest, and I answered their questions that they had, which were in regard primarily to the zoning, access to utilities, and the school district. That's what I recall. We never heard another word from them, so apparently they did not find it to be a viable project. The first contract, an actual contract we've had in all these years, is from logistics, and they have been wonderful to work with. It's been very, very positive. And until this contract, it's my understanding that, I know, that there have been no plans or applications presented to the Village of Bartlett. This is the first time anything has been submitted. Now, we have had, it was not a letter of intent. It's an actual contract that they submitted to us. Over the last five years, we have heard from three other developers. They presented letters of intent, no contract, and we were never able to work anything out on that. It just, we never could reach an agreement on it. But just for informational purposes, all three of them, the plan that they had, had they ever developed it to that point, was very similar to what logistics has. The same types of building, and they would have been requesting change in zoning to light industrial. I'm not sure exactly, you know, the difference between I-1 and I-2, but I know it's light industrial. So, it does seem that that's the only interest in over 50 years we've had, and that's the type of use that seems to be the best use. So, and it seems to us, of course, like a good fit, and it's been wonderful working with logistics, I will say that. And I also want to say that my brothers and I, we do understand the concerns that the neighbors have. In 50 years, we get to look out on farmland, and that's coming to an end, and that's really an end of an era, and we get it. You know, it's going to be disappointing for them to have anything built there, I'm sure. And also, logistics has worked very, great effort, and while you've seen the revised berm and the landscaping, to address their concerns as well. So, that's pretty much the background. I don't know if you have any questions. I'm glad to answer them if I can.
I would just thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Aaron Martel. I'm with Logistics Property Company. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present tonight. You know, we've been active on this project since May of 2018, and there's been a lot of resources from the village allocated to this project, and we're very appreciative of those resources. We've been active in Bartlett since 2015, and we are national industrial developers around the country, active in Bartlett since 2015. We've had two very successful projects. My involvement in Bartlett goes back to the early '90s as a young boy playing baseball in Bartlett. What we have in the Cronin parcel is an opportunity for value creation. As the Brewster Creek Business Park is effectively built out, there are few opportunities for development in Brewster Creek any longer. So, we have identified the Cronin parcel and have been working hard to bring that development to fruition. We are extremely excited about it and hope that we can get to a point where we get an agreement and a favorable vote. The site, next slide, please. Yep. So, these are two of the buildings that we have built in the Brewster Creek Business A combined 450,000 square feet, $33 million of in-value. We built them on spec and leased them very quickly. Again, there is no longer any space in Brewster Creek Business Park for us to develop. Next slide, please. This is the second rendering. This is the facility to the north that is now home to Clark Packaging, and again, another successful, on-time, under-budget development. Next slide, please. Again, this is the future land use plan for Bartlett. If you go to the next slide, you will see a zoomed-in version of that. Again, this is all in the packets. Next slide, please. This shows, again, the obvious continuation of the Brewster Creek Business Park to the location that we're contemplating here today. Next slide. The zoning map has been in place for 40 years under the current zoning. Nothing has happened in 40 years. The land has been inside Bartlett for 52 years in the village. Nothing has happened. I think it's time to get this in the system, get it creating value, get it creating jobs, et cetera. Next slide, please. This is our rendering. Again, as Roberta mentioned, the buildings will be at maximum 41 feet. This is a state-of-the-art, class-leading design. The investment is roughly $25 to $30 million, and we build a top-notch building to attract the best tenants, and we've done it twice already, and we'll continue to do that. It is in our strategy to own these buildings long-term, and when you're owning them long-term, you do not want to have a product type that is going to be susceptible to deterioration and not be a good product type. Next slide, please. Through our discussions with the residents, we have revised and included more screening in berming. Again, as mentioned before, we like the way our buildings look. We take pride in our buildings, but we wanted to offer some screening in berm in the event that the neighbors on Linfield are not happy with the view, so we have increased the berm height from 5 to 6 feet to 9 to 10 feet. We have overplanted it to make sure that there are no concerns or issues from a sightline perspective of the facilities. Next slide. Again, two 207,000-square-foot buildings. Roberta mentioned the fact that the entrance closest to Linfield is a right-in, right-out. The access in the middle of Stearns and Munger, excuse me, in the middle of Stearns is our entrance to the business park, our entrance into the park. What we have done on Stearns is we are expanding Stearns by 11 feet. We are adding a 12-foot turn lane in the median. Today, it's only 3 feet. We are expanding the shoulders to have full asphalt shoulders. We are making Stearns on our dollar a better drivable experience for traffic on Stearns. Next slide, please. We find that sometimes it's easier to depict the distances from the homes by using objects that we're familiar with. This is 500 feet. This is a football field and a corridor from the front door of the homes on the east side of Linfield. There are three homes on Linfield Lane. Next slide, please. These are the distances from the Humbreck businesses. 295 feet from the one on the eastern side, over 250, 60 feet from the business on the west. Next slide, please, Roberta. If you took that same distance from the existing industrial in Humbreck and extended that into the homes in the neighborhood north of Linfield, you are into the residences. We have maintained that boundary. We've maintained that setback, and there is no industrial in that window or in that distance. Next slide, please. These are some more distances. Again, the existing homes on Groton, on Linfield, have been in place here with industrial in their backyard for some time now. Next slide, please. So, at Planning Commission, there were some discussions and questions about the businesses on the north side of our site. So, what we've shown here, this is a cross-section of the north property line. This is showing where our trailer parking is. We have a demising wall, excuse me, a retaining wall that's 8 feet tall, and a tree that stands on top of the berm. The finished floor of the neighboring property to the north is 25 feet below the top of the berm. That distance from a noise perspective, from a, which we don't think is significant based on the uses in Brewster Creek Business Park, is not going to be invasive. It's not going to, there's not going to be a lot of fumes. It's physically not that close. Excuse me, 17 feet to the berm, 25 feet to the top of the tree. Next slide, please. In addition to expanding Stearns, we are adding a bike path. 4.3 acres of green space and ponds. The pond will not be wet bottom, but it'll be planted, nice native grass. It'll look and feel very nice. Next slide, please. These are the improvements to Stearns Road. Again, this is a 12-foot median we're including, 8 feet of additional shoulder on each side, and this is the existing drawing to the bottom section of the slide as well. You can see this is a significant improvement on our dollar to improve Stearns Road. Next slide, please. So, over the next 15 years, and we've taken a static tax number and used that tax number that we've seen in our other businesses, over the next, in Brewster Creek Business Park, over the next 15 years, there'll be $6.2 million of increment. There's no increase in taxes in the current climate. $500,000 in fee revenue to the Village Bartlett. This is over $6.5 million of fees and taxes generated for the Village of Bartlett. Next slide, please. 100 to 120 construction jobs, 120 to 150 full-time jobs. Next slide, please. Again, this is an image of corporate identity. We try to get these buildings looking and feeling as best as possible because we have a significant investment in that. The way we make money is we get our buildings leased. They're not going to get leased if they don't look and feel good. So, we take pride in it, we landscape it, and do our best to make sure that it's looking and feeling as best as possible for the community. Excuse me, next slide. So, as we're talking about density and comparing the density in the Brewster Creek Business Park to the north, what I did is I took an aerial image of what exists on Humbreck currently, and I dropped that down and took 27.7 acres from Humbreck and put it on our site. This is very telling from a perspective, excuse me, of density as to what is already in place compared to what we're proposing. This is significant. This is a tremendous more amount of truck traffic, a tremendous more amount of automobile traffic. Next slide, please. This is what it's going to be. So, this is a little hard to read, but we had discussions with some of the proprietors on the north side on Humbreck, and we were talking about what kind of automobile parking, what kind of trailer parking should be, what kind of dock doors, drive-in doors are existing on Humbreck. So, what we did is we took 1281 Humbreck, it's 1.35 acres. They have 50 auto parking spots and 12 dock slash drive-in doors. When we multiplied that against our average, we would have to have $790 parking slots and 190 dock slash drive-in doors. What do we have currently? 468.56. The density is much less than what's currently being shown to the north. Further, if we had listened, if we had kept the zoning the same and fully built out the zoning, based on what's allowable, we would have three times as many truck and, excuse me, trip generations than what we're proposing. This is a lower-impact use than what is zoned. It's a lower-impact use than what is north on Humbreck and is a continuation of the Brewster Creek Business Park. Next slide, please. Again, Linfield Lane, no traffic to Linfield, right-in, right-out, widen of Stearns, improving the community and Stearns and the flow-through of traffic. Next slide, please. Our traffic engineer, that was approved by both the county and the village, the truck and trip generation at peak hours show seven hours at peak traffic times. We drove through Brewster Creek Business Park at 5:30 before coming over here for the meeting tonight. These are not the types of uses that are heavy bulk transportation uses. There is not a significant amount of truck traffic generated. We know this because we build bulk distribution centers across the world, and we're familiar with the types of users that are in the spaces that have tremendous amount of truck traffic. The local, regional types of users in this park, mainly food, consumer products, it's not as intense of a truck traffic generation. Next slide, please. Since our last meeting, we've met with the residents to further hear more concerns about what they want and what they want to see. We've increased the berm height. We've added additional landscaping to the north property line. We have confirmed the trash, the treatment of trash, the treatment of snow. We have reduced the existing water flow, our plan, by 85% of what currently flows on that site, 85%. Truck idling will be limited to the ordinances in place. Loading dock ventilation where required, propane-fueled or electric forklifts. Again, these uses are not heavy uses based on what we're talking about. No yard equipment. We're doing some changes to the landscaping based on what's required by the forest preserve. There will be no asphalt on this site. It's all going to be concrete. We do that because it lasts longer and makes our tenants happier. We really appreciate everyone's effort. We're trying to get this thing done the right way. I think this is going to be a great boon for Bartlett. When we met with one of the residents, he said, "The Brewster Creek Business Park is like the Woodfield of Bartlett, and it's creating a lot of jobs. It's creating a lot of momentum. It's creating, excuse me, I'm getting a cold here, creates a lot of opportunities. We want to continue it. This is in the comprehensive plan." Again, thank you very much for letting us present tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we should invite residents.
We'll just read off the names of people that want to speak. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. We do have your name and address, so you don't need to read that off. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, our first is Marlene Palmer.
Good evening. I'm Marlene Palmer, and I live at 874 Groton Lane. Having a warehouse with 28 truck bays within 500 feet of homes in our subdivision is completely inappropriate for a transition from a health and safety standpoint. This construction places our residents at risk for exposure to diesel fumes from idling trucks, increases respiratory complications for young and old, increases and worsens asthma, allergies, bronchitis, and heart functions. Personally, that affects my home. It also affects children who play in the park directly across the street from this building. The diesel fume issue is also the main objection that 78 business people in the Brewster Creek Development point out, and the berms and the landscaping is not going to decrease exposure to those fumes. It's difficult for me to accept the fact that one candidate from the election has said, and I quote, "I want to enhance services that contribute to the healthy, productive lifestyles our residents desire for themselves and their families while providing a greater level of safety to residents in our world," and yet seems to favor this construction. Several candidates, now trustees, promote healthy and safe lifestyles as a vocation and occupation. Some have respiratory issues. Trustees have young children. They are Bartlett families who work to protect their own from these respiratory threats. But none of those trustees, none of you, live in the Weathersfield area. So it's not in my backyard, is it? We Weathersfield residents and Brewster Creek business people are not whining about what could happen. We've substantiated health claims, have voiced our viewpoints with a petition of 122 residents opposing it and 78 business people at Brewster Creek. This should send a message to you as trustees. It's been an investment property for years. It will sell at a premium. It seems that resident and business opposition to this is being ignored and overlooked, putting this on the fast track to sell. The dollar signs from revenue and the fact that this is one of the last DuPage County land parcels is taking first place, not the welfare of resident taxpayers. Whatever happened to our trustees listening to residents, representing the residents fairly and putting health and safety above monetary gain? And I would ask, how many Weathersfield residents are here tonight opposing? Hands up. Okay, I hope that speaks to you. We would urge you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Madam. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're not opposed to progress. We certainly, and I was the one who mentioned the Woodfield of Bartlett, we certainly appreciate what's going on at the Brewster Creek Business Park and how that development is affecting our tax dollars. But we don't feel that that development needs to be at our front door. We oppose the rezoning of this property from the SR5 and OR to the I-2 industrial uses. This existing zoning anticipated a logical land use transition from our low-density single-family homes to the more intense uses west and north of Sterns and Munger roads. This is where the business park really gets its first identity in the village. As you drive west on Sterns Road, you pass the medical facility, and you immediately are seeing the backs of single-family homes all the way to Linfield, probably a quarter of a mile of the backs of single-family homes backing onto, we have a residential identity up to Linfield. Staff has cited that the West Bartlett Road corridor, arguing that this proposed plan and rezoning is in compliance with that West Bartlett Road corridor plan. I'd like to quote two sections of that, of your plan that was done by Tescan Associates. Under development potential in your West Bartlett Road corridor plan, it states, "Several smaller pieces of land adjacent to existing residential areas would be ideal for new residential uses." This is from your West Bartlett Road plan. In addition, under the development plan values, "A desire for high-quality development, a strong sense of place with distinct neighborhood characteristics." This is the plan that you approved in the West Bartlett Road corridor. This proposed development placing two big box industrial uses on a small 27-acre lot at the front door of our residential community does not meet the intent of the West Bartlett Road corridor plan. We prepared a compromise plan, which the developer mentioned, which addresses a proper land use transition as more in keeping with the existing zoning. And that is to have a residential transition from our low-density single-family to the Brewster Creek Business Park. As I said before, the business park identity really is established at the intersection of Munger and Sterns. That's where you experience the business park. You don't experience it at Linfield and Sterns. You experience it at Sterns and Munger. We are compromising by saying, let the developer have one of his big box users at the intersection of Sterns and Munger with a right-in, right-out off of Sterns, not impacting a left turn lane, necessitating a left turn lane off of Sterns and giving them the full access off of Munger.
Thank you for your comments. You can wrap it up if you just have, you have a few more.
Additional time, I'd like to explain a little bit more about the plan.
Time is up, but...
And it also wasn't mentioned, but we have a 100-foot wide, 30-foot-high berm separating our homes from the existing business park.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. One of the things I found interesting was the individual met with a single resident, and yet we have 122 residents that voiced their opinion at the last meeting. I'm wondering what happened to the other 121. My major concern is having the potential of 400 vehicles leave the industrial park at one time, two or three times a day, two or three shifts a day. With that many parking spots, you surely could have that many employees. That would make it very difficult for us to leave that site as it is. In addition, I'm very concerned about cars parking, or trucks parking on Sterns. I've seen a lot of people parking on, I think it's Shifert. I think that's been addressed, but truck parking, I would hope, would be against the law on Sterns, something I'm very concerned about. The concern mostly, though, is having to try to pull out on that road in general. So if there's any way to have the trucks and the cars leaving on Munger Road, that might make it safer for us to be able to pull out from that industrial park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Pribelski. I have lived in Bartlett for 42 years, and the last 15 at 875 Brewster Lane. Do you know what many of us would like to have in our village? An active 55 and over community. Active, not like we already have in Bartlett. Our village is missing a big demographic. My husband was a veteran, began his 20-plus-year firefighting career in Vietnam. He suffered with effects from Agent Orange from his Vietnam service. We needed to move into a ranch home due to those negative effects on his health. We found one adjacent to the property in question. We would have moved in a heartbeat to an active 55 and older community anywhere in Bartlett where we were so active, and I do it today. Jerry and others re-instituted the Bartlett VFW post 28 years ago. He and others were also charter members of the Veterans Memorial Foundation, working tirelessly for both. I'm privileged to be a VFW auxiliary member because of his service. I've been serving the community through their capacity for 22 years. Have you seen me during Poppy Days or Flag Days collecting for our veterans? I bet you have. A memorial day at Bartlett Cemetery, laying a wreath for our veterans? I bet you have. Or when I helped defend the residents concerned with a proposed banquet hall right in their backyards, not mine. Or when I worked days, no weeks, months, with our fine fire chief, Elise, to help the passing of the Fire District Amendment to prevent the closing of a fire station. I want you to know what kind of people live in this subdivision. Or as a Bartlett Women's Club volunteer at Candidates Night, providing you, our trustees and others, an opportunity to be heard and re-elected. Congratulations. Many of my neighbors also belong to at least one civic or church organization. I see some of my veteran neighbors are here, some active in the American Legion, excuse me. Neighbors are nurses, teachers, a retired first responder. There are many young families in Weathersfield also, many with infants, toddlers, and children of all ages. Some of us truly love Bartlett. We can say that because we live here, we work here, we volunteer here. We enjoy serving our village to help make Bartlett the kind of village people learn to love. I've heard people on the other side say that they love Bartlett. Well, we truthfully do. I leave you with a quote. "Bartlett is a community all are proud to call home. We are a village that values our past, cherishes our present, and works together to thoughtfully plan for the future." Where is that from? Bartlett's Vision Statement, right from the Bartlett website. President Wallace, trustees, I urge you to vote no. That is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pribelski.
Is there any chance we can silence these cell phones?
That's our timer.
Oh, it's a timer. I thought somebody's sitting out there with a cellphone. It's the timer on a cellphone.
Good evening, Mr. President and Village Trustees. My name is George Cozio, and I reside at 654 Hazelnut Court, Bartlett. I would like to say a few words about the Munger and Sterns land development project. This area is in need of rezoning because it is not in keeping with the Bartlett land use plan of 1989. The area in question was last rezoned in 1978 to OR and SR5. In 41 years between 1978 and today, there has not been an interest by anyone to purchase and develop the property. For several years, the owners of this property have been interested in selling the family property. They have faced a shrinking market with no interest in this land, which contains the OR/SR5 zoning. The family is being held hostage in effect by the zoning. Now, in 2019, 41 years later, a developer is expressing interest in purchasing the property. Because of the current zoning, the developer is petitioning for a rezoning of the property to I-2. This would bring the property into consistent zoning with the Bartlett Future Land Use Map and the neighboring Brewster Creek Business Park. The buildings being proposed are in keeping with buildings in Brewster Creek. There are several things that this developer has proposed to do for the best of all. The developer is committed to working with the village and residents. The land would be divided into three properties. Lot 1 and 2 to the west will be developed into two separate warehouse buildings. Lot 3 is a special and unique, is being planned by the developer to be a retention area. This immediately offers a large 500-foot distance to the nearest homeowner to the east. The location of Lot 3 will result in no automobile and truck traffic onto the property. No traffic will flow onto the property from the east, and this is good for the neighbors. It will provide a buffer zone with the berm to aid in blocking the view of the property from the east. There will be a variety of plantings that will also block the view. I think it is important to mention again that the developer is willing to increase the height of the originally planned berm and to provide additional plantings to improve what was originally proposed to the east and to the north. The nearest entrance to the property is located some distance west of Linfield Drive along Sterns, and it is a right-in, right-out for passenger vehicles only. This reduces truck traffic in the area, again, a consideration by the developer. The westernmost entrance is closer to Munger Road and will permit full access to passenger vehicles and trucks. Munger Road will permit right-in and a right-out, left-out for both passenger vehicles and trucks. Again, this location configuration is done in consideration of the residential properties to the east and to the north. I do not understand why current businesses to the north in Brewster Creek would be against this development. They should be willing to welcome new businesses to the area as they once were welcomed. They should not say no. Now, it is incorrect and unfair to make judgments on traffic volumes, which are in reality and unknown. The traffic would be determined by the type of business moving in. It has been expressed in courts that increased traffic is a condition incident to urban living. It is merely the result of normal urban growth and development. We should not allow this to halt business growth in Bartlett. There are more things that I could say, but they are presented in the meeting packets that you have in your possession, and I assume you've read this document. I want to remind you that it is your fiduciary responsibility to do what is the best and right thing for over 42,000 residents in the Village of Bartlett. I would expect to see your vote to be in keeping with what each of you has said for many years, that Bartlett wants to be business-friendly. I hope that we do not lose this opportunity to welcome this developer to the Village of Bartlett, unlike we did with another business several years ago. A yes to approve this project is in keeping what is stated on the door to the Village Hall. Progress with pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cozio. That does it for our comment section for the committee of the whole meeting. That's all the people that signed up to make comments. Does the board have any questions for positioners? Oh, you got one more?
My name is William Lemack, and I'm the owner of 1281 Humbrock Circle, Suite M. We are the closest building to the north edge of the property. And reviewing the plans, I'm noticing that there's supposed to be a fence line that is going on the north end, okay? Unfortunately, from two or three of the plans, I have conflicting stuff. One landscaping plan shows no fencing there. Another one shows it only in part of the property. And my building has to be the one that basically fence comes in from Munger, stops on our eastern or western parking lot. There's another exposure for over 150, 200 feet where there's no fencing, and then the fence starts up and continues on in that location. So I'm wondering, is that something that was reviewed? I see no plans in regards to the actual type of fence that is going to go in in that area. It says it's supposed to be supplied by other vendors at that point in time. But my concern is, is that in that location, we are susceptible to seeing some of the trucks. This rendering here that I see that there's going to be a berm there is the first time I've seen that. I did not see that in any of the other plans. So is there the berm being put in place instead of the fence? Or is the berm adjacent to the fence line that is going in?
I believe you got some gentlemen right behind you that can answer that for you. Is there any other things that you want to comment on while your time's still going?
Just that I'm concerned with the diesel truck smells, and so our property is 15-foot down. It basically comes into our area, and I'm the closest one with my building to this site.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Rieger from V3 Companies, the civil engineer for the project. So the areas that you're referring to, the fencing, that line is actually a retaining wall, and you can see that retaining wall shown in that specific location. So the fencing is really like a railing essentially on top of that retaining wall for safety. As you get further to the east, we were able to make it work just from the grading and everything that the retaining wall is not needed. So the fence... So the fence is really in regard to the retaining wall, not in regard to fencing that entire north property line. Now, there still is the same grade change between the property to the north and the property to the south. So that grade change is still there, and we are still cutting that parking, so where that truck is, we're still cutting that parking on that south side. So essentially, it'll be there. We just were able to make it work that we didn't need the retaining wall for that complete stretch.
Okay, well, it just stops in front of my building.
The retaining wall does.
Yeah. The berm is continual.
The berm is continual. So the top of it is the same, same elevation pretty much the whole way down.
So is the fence on top of the berm?
The fence will be on top of the wall. It's a safety railing. It's not a board-on-board fence. It's a safety railing to prevent people from falling over the wall.
Okay, well, why wouldn't it be continued all the way in that area?
Because there's not the same level of safety required on a berm as there is on a retaining wall.
Okay, well, I'd like to see a little bit more on that, if we can work that out.
Thank you, Mr. Lemack.
Thank you.
I believe that does it for our... One more quick question.
I apologize for how I'm dressed. I was working in the garden before I came. My name's Randall Feinice, 871 Brewster Lane. My question to you guys, you guys have these trees up on these berms. Are these full-grown trees that you're putting in, or are these small little trees that you're expecting to grow over the years?
Can you, Roberta, can you go back to the slide that we had that shows the berm?
I didn't even hear that.
What was the question? I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's wondering if there's baby trees or full-grown trees going to be put in there.
Okay, so what size trees are we talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
When they're planted.
Generally, the size of the trees. Very in maturity. But if you look, if you go back to that, sorry, Roberta, that slide.
Well, no, these are some of the trees I'm talking about here.
This is what he's talking about right here.
Yeah, so are these, is this what it's going to look like in 20 years or year one?
So those are more mature trees.
Yeah.
If you...
Okay. All right. Does the board have any comments or questions for petitioner?
Not this time.
All right, we will be moving directly into...
We got some questions. My first question is about the DuPage County ordinance for truck idling. I'd like, I know you don't have the statistics in front of you, but I'd like some statistics from the DuPage County Sheriff and the Barla Police Department for how many citations we've actually cited trucks for in the Brewster Creek Business Park. Is this something that has been enforced? Or is this something that we're magically going to just start enforcing?
You're talking about for idling?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just at the next meeting, if we could get that or before that meeting. My other question is for the traffic consultant. If a car is turning northbound on Munger Road from Sterns, and a truck is leaving the facility, is that car going to have enough time to react? Because trucks don't accelerate at a quick, you know, clip. So my question is, will that truck be able to clear that intersection by the time a car turns onto Munger?
You mean if the truck is actually turning south?
If the car, yeah, if the truck is turning south.
Yeah, I think that's very similar to a lot of things that you have like in any retail outlet, right? There's trucks coming in and out of there that are turning left and right in front of cars all day.
Well, I'd like our traffic engineer to actually give us what his or her...
It's limited, it's also limited to non-peak hours of left turns.
Okay. And also, is your, are the things that you're proposing, are they approved by DuPage County yet?
Yes.
100%?
They're being... You have to permit, they approve.
Okay.
Our traffic consultant's here tonight. She could try to address that.
I'm just not an expert on the acceleration of a truck and how fast a car could turn around to turn, so if you could just elaborate on that a little bit.
Yes, of course. During peak hours of operation, first and foremost, left-turning vehicles from exiting the access during the 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., the 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., when the adjacent street traffic is the heaviest, truck turning and all vehicle turning will be prohibited from making lefts from the site access onto southbound Munger. There'll be no southbound left turns from Munger to the site access, so both of those concerns are alleviated during that timeframe. As far as timeframes for vehicles to make that left turn from the site, they're, based on the analysis that was provided by the applicant in our review of that, there are adequate gaps within the traffic stream for acceptable operations for those trucks to make those maneuvers during off-peak timeframes.
And I'm sorry, was there another question?
No.
Yes. Yes, in regard to traffic.
What about the Sterns Road left out? Because that's one of my biggest concerns. I'm up and down Sterns and Munger all the time, at least twice every day. I see large trucks on Munger make left-hand turns. They don't care if I'm coming. You can give me all the statistics in the world, but they don't care because they don't have to. And my concern is that some trucker's going to pull a left and head east on Sterns Road.
So the same, I believe the same premises, based on our analysis that was provided during the peak times, there are sufficient gaps for those left-turning vehicles to, a truck to make a left turn out, as well as adequate sight lines from the adjacent traffic signals for left-turning truck vehicles.
Didn't I hear the petitioner suggest that trucks are going to be exiting and entering through Munger?
The trucks won't be exiting via the right-in, right-out access, the easternmost access on Sterns Road. It would be via the central access as well as the access onto Munger.
Yeah.
But the access onto Munger was not a full access predominantly because of the spacing to the adjacent intersection. You can't, there's not enough distance to develop a southbound left-turn lane into the site.
Now, they discussed the width of Sterns being expanded, and I know that there are sometimes issues, people coming in and out of the main entrance from Brewster Creek with semi-traffic, just the amount of time that you have to wait for them in order to be able to get out of there. Is the width going to be wider for this project than it is at Stern, at the main entrance to Brewster Creek? Do you know that, Roberta?
Is the...
The width of the Sterns exiting this new project and the width of the intersection where these trucks are getting in and out of Brewster Creek's main entrance?
Brian, do you know?
Are we talking about, I apologize, but are we talking about...
The example that we have here, our trucks come in and out of Brewster Creek's main entrance all the time.
So at Sterns and Munger?
No, at Brewster Creek's main entrance. They're pulling in, out of Brewster Creek's main entrance all day long.
So it's Humbrocked, like on Humbrock Door across the street?
Yeah, yeah, right out of Brewster Creek's main entrance.
So we are, basically for this, we're extending that five-lane section the entire way from Sterns to Linfield. So what you see, the width at Sterns and Munger...
It will be wider.
It'll be that same width.
Significantly wider.
Yeah, it'll be that same width. The only thing that, yeah, it'll be, it'll be that same width.
There's no, I just looked. There's no median median that's drivable on Munger. So will that one, or will not have?
Yeah, yep.
Right.
One of the residents had a question about a mass exodus of employees from the employee parking areas in, at specific times, given that this likely will lend itself to shift work. How can that intersection, we talk about peak times, but that's, that's the rest of the world's peak times. Peak times for that building will be different. How will that absorb 200 or 400 cars leaving and entering at the same time?
While the specific user of the development isn't known, we, as traffic engineers, rely on industry standards for the types of uses. So looking at, for this specific use for warehousing, looking at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, they have surveys done for various similar-type uses all across the country. And based on these uses for this specific type of development, during peak hours of operation, which are typically, do coincide with the adjacent street traffic, there's a total of approximately 80 vehicles entering and exiting combined. So 80 vehicles during the highest one hour. So that, when you distribute that across the adjacent roadway network, you're really adding about one car, one to two cars per minute, which isn't going to significantly impact the adjacent street network. So we don't expect, just based on reviewing typical hourly distributions of the, of similar-type sites, more than 10% of the adjacent, of the daily volumes to occur beyond one-hour timeframe. So at the most, we would expect there to be approximately 80 vehicles total, that's combined, entering and exiting during a one-hour timeframe.
Thank you.
Final questions?
Let's talk about the buildings. Do you anticipate subdividing the buildings and having multiple users in each building?
In a perfect world, we'd have one user per building. In an even more perfect world, there'd be one user to take both. We set them up so that there are two users per building, and we carry a line item in our budget for a demising wall so as to really flexibly make that demise.
Because when I read the materials, 28 docks seems like a lot to me. You can't possibly think that those would all be used or in use or about to be used.
Again, when we were driving around Brewster Creek Business Park in advance of the meeting tonight, we noticed that buildings that are leased, 100% occupied, they're not using all their dock positions.
Okay. They'll have all those docks. And I think that that's scary for a lot of people, too, because they see 28 docks and think 28 trucks.
Right, and I think we can go back to the metric that I've created based on what's already existing on Humbrocked, and there's quite a few less dock positions and drive-in doors on our site than what's already in place.
That's where the density comes into play.
Sure, sure.
Anything else?
I'm still very concerned about the left onto Sterns. So if there's a way to address that before it goes to the board, I'd certainly appreciate that.
And I'm also concerned with the exit onto Munger, going southbound with trucks.
I would, I would think that's kind of a red herring, because people do that kind of stuff all day long at every retail outlet that you go by. I'm taking a right turn, I have to wait for a truck that's turning right. I have taken a right turn, I have to wait for a truck that's going left. I think that's, I think that's not a plausible concern. But that, I appreciate your opinion. I would just add, before we finalize here, I know this is a pretty emotional topic for a lot of people. I want to commend the board for the amount of hours that they've spent. We're done. We have a, we have a, put a lot of extra work in. I've requested staff put a lot of extra work in due to the health concerns that I heard tonight, due to traffic. The petitioner, the people that the petitioner's selling to obviously has tried every effort to put something differently in there. I don't know that residential would want to go behind, have commercial businesses behind them. I don't think that's plausible. I think this is one of the few type of uses that would be plausible for this spot. Has anybody have any final comments? We will be going, moving directly into executive session tonight to discuss personnel pursuant, personnel pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act. We'll also be discussing at executive session, sale of village-owned property pursuant to Section 2C6 of the Open Meetings Act. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Dany. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.
We are adjourned to executive session.